Okay, I'd like to call the Plan Commission meeting to order on Monday, August 30th, 2021, at 6:00 PM. Janelle, could you please take roll call?
Hurdle.
Here.
Gretzsmacher.
Here.
Zoski.
Here.
Schmitz.
Yep.
And Bell.
Here.
Comments?
Whoops, I'm sorry, word is excused and we don't know if Mary Kay is coming or not.
Okay, comments, correspondence, and concerns from the public. I believe we don't have any public joining us.
Nope, not that I can see.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I so moved.
Second.
Motion by Gretzsmacher, second by Bell, all in favor respond with an "I."
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried? Is there a motion to approve the minutes as published?
So moved.
Motion by Zoski.
Second.
Second by Schmitz, all in favor respond with an "I."
Aye.
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 Opposed? Carried? Item number one, discussion regarding the tent regulations that are contained in 660302, the zoning code for the village of Sister Bay. Bo?
Yep, I am showing my screen right now. Okay. So this is 66.0302 use restrictions. I want to start here by just showing the simple revision that we've made to clarify the issue that we've been having with tents this year. The original language was the temporary sale of goods from a truck, trailer, table, or tent shall only be permitted as part of a festival permit issued by the Village Board. I added language on top of that in the subsection A, which clarifies that temporary tents are prohibited on commercial property unless part of a festival permit issued by the Village Board. I'm going to switch this over quickly to the work session and hopefully I can take us to the definition that I included. Okay, so I added, if everyone can see this, a temporary tent, a non-permanent prefabricated accessory structure characterized by a frame/structure with a cover on top and/or sides that is erected for use for any purpose. So the combination of both of these should be stopping and clarifying any issues moving forward with temporary tents in the village.
Is it actually the Village Board that Heidi gives out the permit? Or that, I don't know that the Village Board issues the permits, Bo?
So if, and if I recollect and I might be wrong, but I believe the Parks, Properties, and Streets Committee approves all of the events or recommends the approval of the events to the Village Board who then approves all of the events.
Through, are you talking about SBAA?
Correct.
So does that mean, just for clarification, so when we go back and reference this addition, if it has to go through SBAA, should we not notate that?
We can't.
Or go through, because you know, it would have to be part of SBA's presentation to Parks and then Parks.
So I didn't know if you wanted to clarify that as just SBAA, because we obviously have the Marina Fest too, which isn't an SBA event, but still gets part of the compiled list of Village-approved events, which I would consider classify those SBA events to be as well.
Um.
I don't, I don't think we, oh, sorry.
I'm sorry, would it make more sense, because I used to process those applications, to just have the Parks Committee approve it, because typically, that's what happens. The only big festivals that are approved are like Fall Fest and things like that, but otherwise Parks approves everything else.
So how about, okay, Rob?
No, I was just going to say that I don't think we want to hamper the Village and/or Parks by saying anything about SBAA. I mean, if we clarify that it's approved by Parks or, and/or the Village, then, you know, we're not excluding the Village from on its own deciding that there's going to be a festival.
New ones could arise, you never know.
How does that revision look?
That's better.
So this would not apply to like Marina Park, where they had that tent for what I thought was way too long this weekend.
Well, that is a Village-approved event.
But would this be the appropriate place to put some limitations on that, or because it's a Village piece of property, that's something the Village would do through parks and streets or?
There are, Nate, there are limitations on it already when they fill out the application with Heidi, that it cannot be set up before 1:00 PM on Friday, and it must be down by 10:00 AM on Monday. So that's all in a separate application.
Who enforces that?
That would be a combination, yeah, that'd be a combination of both the clerk and myself as administrator.
Okay.
And they did have the tent down, they did have the tent down on Sunday.
They did, but they also had the tent up on Thursday.
They did?
I believe so, I can go back through and look at pictures, it was.
Okay.
It was, it was up on Thursday, because we were wondering if it was going to be a Friday wedding.
Yes, it was up on Thursday, because I noticed it when I went to work.
And that's why, Bo, when you're out of town or heading out of town, we should know specifically who in your place would be the person we turn to for something like that.
Well, and there were many issues with that wedding. I spoke with Dave Lino over at the Marina today. So yeah, somebody needs to follow up that they did, they did not follow the application.
Well, in a brief summary of that, and I want to keep this brief, because this agenda item doesn't pertain to this too much, but we as a municipality and as the Village are withholding that security deposit for a number of reasons and issues that happened on that wedding during that event. So there were some ramifications for some of the decision-making that they did at that event, and we're making sure that the coordinator of that event is aware, so we don't have the same issue twice.
Unfortunately, that coordinator was taken to the hospital Saturday morning.
I did hear about that as well, and I did speak to another individual about that matter. So we're going to rectify that, I understand that some issues took place, we just, I want to make sure that we communicate to them the issues and how we resolve it.
Okay.
And don't you think this is appropriate with the labor shortage right now with COVID? I mean, seriously, maybe that was the one time they could get up the tent. I, I mean, seriously, just a little bit outside of the box right now, leader is crazy.
That park is there for public use, and I think that it is being used by a private event for one additional day, I don't think that, I'm not actually for having events in that park at all, and I spoke up about that a long time ago, or it seems like a long time ago in the waterfront park, but at the same point, I think that Bo is probably about to tell me that we're getting off on a non-agenda item and that we need to be careful, and I should probably stop talking at this point about it. I could, I could feel that, you're getting ESP going there, well, good job.
Okay, I now like the way it reads.
Okay, all right, we can move on to another agenda item if there's no other questions, otherwise this will become part of the public hearing that we have after everything is said and done.
Okay. You're, okay.
I'm just gonna, if you want to transition over to the next agenda.
Well, when you share your screen, it can't read the agenda, so can you read the second agenda item, please?
Yep. Conducting of a Plan Commission work session at which proposed revisions to several sections of the zoning code, Chapter 66 of the Municipal Code for the Village of Sister Bay will be reviewed, consider motion for action if appropriate.
Okay.
Okay, so first off, I just want to thank the Plan Commission Chair for taking a significant amount of time to actually going through this document with staff to make some of the changes needed in the short timeframe that we had, so thank you Denise. I did go through this document as well. After the last meeting, we made several revisions where they were consistent and repetitive among different sections of the code. We did do kind of a word search to make sure it was consistent, so that's been done. So tonight, we, I just thought we'd go through this one more time, make sure everyone was comfortable with the language and how it reads, and then by the end of this, hopefully we can schedule a public hearing for comments and correspondence regarding.
And I think I made comments when I went through it again, the little bubbles where I felt that we needed still to address something or follow up on.
Okay, so I'm just going to continue to scroll, because this has been available to everyone, and if there's a point where you want me to stop, just tell me, okay? Okay, so right here, we do have comments. Okay, so Denise asked why those aren't inserted yet. They are inserted in the document that we will be preparing for the public hearing. The document that we're going to be using for the public hearing, Janelle has taken the time to put back and reorganize into the two-column structure that the zoning code actually has. So for purposes of just continuity, keeping this going, the lot dimensions weren't included in the work session packet here, but they will be included in the public hearing section, but after this, we are going to switch over to that document, so you can see what those tables read as.
Bo?
Yes.
Why, why would we go back to the two-column? It's so much easier to read this way, I know it's only, you know, certain sections, but why wouldn't we just leave it like this, that's, takes up less space, less paper, less pages?
So because the public, so you have to have the document prepared in a consistent manner, so if the zoning code is currently two columns for the public hearing section, in order to make it fluid, so that people understand the document, you have to have it in the same two-column format, so until we change the format of the zoning code, from the perspective of the public hearing, it has to be a consistent reading document.
Okay, that seems absolutely ridiculous to me, but we can move on.
Okay, why couldn't we just share it like this format for the public hearing? And then it's.
I'm sure you're going by state statute, am I correct?
That one isn't state statute, Mary Kay, that's just, that's how I project, if, if you're going to have a public hearing on a document that's, that's already existing, in order for people to best understand it, I like to put it back into the format that it was existing in, so that people can understand it, so if they go through another, like the whole entire zoning code, they can read it and follow along.
It's just continuity, right?
Yes.
Okay.
It will make sense when you see the document again, with the tables inserted into it.
Okay.
Okay.
Stop, this is my comment, now, maybe I'm not paying attention, but did we really mean six inches?
We did.
Holy.
Used to be four, didn't it?
Not that I remember.
Gee, I sort of remember four.
Okay. Oh.
You want me to go back, David?
There was a comment in there about the distance. Yeah.
Oh, yes, okay.
I think Nate did the 125 off the GIS map, didn't he?
Yes.
All right, so it is.
So yeah, that was my question, that there was a comment about expanding it to 140 feet, I simply, and Bo said, then, you know, wrote in there, remember, we left it the same, I just have no recollection of that conversation. If everybody agrees with that, then all that can just be deleted.
Okay, so there's a comment that says discussion on this.
Right, and so I don't know, because that section of the code is not something that we were, on page eight, which is setback requirements from the water. I didn't know if, if we should discuss this now, even though it wasn't included, or if this is a conversation that we should have then at one of our future work sessions, because I found their setback averaging in developed areas and undeveloped areas, and we were getting rid of the other averaging, and so I thought, well, my gosh, you know, in setback requirements from the water certainly is, is very important, so, you know, do we, we don't have it in front of us unless we have a hard copy of the zoning code or can pull up the zoning code on a computer and, and go over page eight, or should we just leave it and readdress it with all the other things that we talked about that Nate cut and pasted a few meetings ago? Because I understand it'll probably be pretty hard if we don't have the page eight in front of us.
Just wait.
Okay.
Let's add it to the list.
This is mandated by the state, I actually met, met a member of the Army Corps of Engineers on Saturday, who was up doing Sturgeon Bay, Manitowoc, and Kewahnee, and we had a good discussion about how little we can actually do in, in regards to what is mandated by the state, so.
Right, but that doesn't mean that we have to average, do setback averaging as that ordinance was created in 2006, 15 years ago, so.
I think averaging is a, is allowed by the state.
Okay, but that doesn't mean we have to allow it.
I think we can get more stringent than the state, but we can't get less stringent than the state, so you are correct.
Okay. So Nate, can you, can you add that to your list? Do you have that available, so we don't?
I can, I can pull that list up, actually, I remembered last, last week that I hadn't sent that to Bo and sent it to him, but I'll, I'll get that and I'll, just pull up that doc and I'll grab it and paste it in there.
Okay, thank you so much.
Nate, do you want me to stay on this page for a second?
Yeah, give me one moment, so I can go, because I think I've got that, I think I have the right doc up on my other screen here. On you, location. No, that's, you're on the online, yeah, okay, I'm there, I'm just not seeing.
You can, you should be able to go to where I'm clicked, if you look at the, next to share.
Yeah, I'm seeing that, and I'm seeing, you might be in here a couple times. You might be on more than once.
I might be, hold on one second.
I know that, because I do that a lot, though.
I am, it should be gone now. There you go.
Well, let's see, and it should be on. Got it.
Thanks, Dave.
I'm going to put this on at the end and I'll date it, so we know that this was from this meeting, not the previous one. Okay, I got it.
Okay, R1, the comment here. The CBRF.
Yeah, when Jeff was talking to us at the last meeting, I thought he had given us proposed wording to address all, all of that.
I can follow up with him tomorrow, and I'm going to leave this comment in here to make sure, and if so, I can insert that language in there, but I don't think I have anything.
Does anybody else remember that?
No.
Denise, I seem to recall that he mentioned some other lingo for that entire beginning of the sentence up to CBRF, license community slash and other living arrangements, CBRF.
Here, I found it in my notes, it says, community living arrangements and define. So there was something that he had suggested.
He will know, so I'll leave this comment in here and add any, add any language.
And so there'll be multiple comments where, you know, this comes up.
Okay. Okay, once again, the tables will be inserted back, back.
I, I'm just glad to see nobody fainted that I more or less accurately recalled something from last meeting.
Oh, Rob, even a broken clock's right twice a day.
Hey.
Except the digital one.
Okay, same thing, I'm going to leave that comment here. A large lot, same thing. Small lot. CS1. Okay. Okay, we didn't talk about this delete.
So what section is this in?
This is, just to make sure I'm correct, I believe this is CS1, yep, countryside.
So we deleted that in not all, but some of the other districts, and this was still left in there, I didn't remember talking about this, so if this is CS1, I don't think it applies when you have a 10-acre lot.
I would agree.
Yeah.
Shiloh, stop.
Okay, so that's going to be red line, okay, B1, general business. Okay, single-family housing as of September 1, 2010.
Um, I would like Nate to put this on the list also, I was thinking about the changes that we have made in the B2 district, the transition district, and I did mention this to Bo, I, I would like us to have, with the changes that we've made, a bigger discussion on if this is still what we want. So we can talk about that in the future. And, and the reason for that is because if we have decided that the lots are too small, that we're not allowing hotels, motels, condominiums of the such, and we don't allow single-family housing, except what's already there, we're, basically what we're saying is everything will stay the same, and we're really trying to encourage commercial business to expand, someplace for the, you know, other businesses to go that aren't on the main drag. But we can't find retail for the main drag, so I was just wondering if this was still appropriate, and that's all that I'll say, because we'll talk about it in the future.
Okay.
Denise, what do you mean specifically when you say we can't find retail for the main drag?
We can't.
We cannot find people who are Chris schmeltz, you know, granted, I know that it may have been an excuse, it may have been true, it may have been the rents, but when we first started talking about the Door Hotel, he had said how, that he wasn't having any luck finding takers to lease, to lease the units on the first floor. I remember when Marina View, next to Calstrom Ray, that they also talked about that. I just, it seems to be a pattern, and I just think that we, we should have some, some more serious conversation about it.
I, I would suggest that we, at some point, think about how we might come up with an incentivized, incentivized, village-based offer to somebody who would want to enter into retail, where perhaps, you know, we could create some sort of a fund to help a new or aspiring business with a scaled structure, where the business, as the business becomes successful, they could pay us back or whatever, but I think we need to, I think, I think the cost for somebody who would have been willing to try something has been very daunting in many instances.
Not just the cost, but also the parking situation. I have a commercial property on the market in Ephraim, where people have come in, and I've suggested certain venues in Sister Bay, it would be cheaper to build in this district, and they have simply stated that they do not want to come to Sister Bay anymore, they feel Sister Bay is overbuilt, I've gotten that three times now. And at the same time, I want to assure you, we are still moving commercial properties at a very steady rate in Sister Bay, and in the Doors' defense, my sister is the manager of the spa at Lodge Kohler, and seriously, between she and I, I think we approached every spa in the state of Wisconsin to try to get into the Door Hotel, and it just didn't happen.
Interesting.
I think that brings up a great point, that I think that we, I was, I was, came upon an article in the Pulse from quite a few years now, we're talking about the Parking Committee that came up, that was, you and I and Chad and Britt, and I think that we need to take another go at that, I think I've got a lot more ideas now than I did back then, I know that, but I think that it's something we could, that's impacting a lot of things as far as the Plan Commission touches, is parking.
I think you're hitting the nail on the head, Nate.
Okay, Bo.
Okay, we are in the B3 downtown.
No, 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 you just got rid of my bubble and we didn't talk about it.
Oh, I thought that's what we were just talking about.
No.
Okay.
It was the parking exemption, right?
Right there, yeah, hop back up.
So I don't, I don't know why, or can't remember, why we deleted this, I think my comment is, shouldn't it be the same as the B3 district, where the B2 district even has smaller lots? Am I just forgetting that we had conversation about this and wanted it deleted?
It looks like it was deleted on the 18th. Just pulling this up quick. Looks like it was deleted.
I mean, does anybody agree with me or disagree with me, that, you know, if you only need three spaces, you know, you're allowed a pass in B3, but in B2 with even smaller lots, we're not going to let you have a pass?
I don't remember.
I, I think we should have parking maximums, not minimums, but that's a pretty radical shift, and that's probably a far longer discussion than we really want to get into tonight.
So my question is, should it mirror B3 or not?
It should mirror B3.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so we want it back on just like this.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, we're in B3. Okay. There's a comment from Denise, should we define single family housing?
I did that already. I defined it.
Continuing on.
Can, can we see it?
Yep, it's in the definition.
When we get to definitions, we can, we can bring that up. Okay. Looks like Denise reworded this. I'm just going to delete this thread.
Well, did everybody read that? I mean, I don't know when they read the document. I can't remember exactly what day last week. You know, I made the changes, but I think because I reworded it, we should read it out loud. So everybody's in agreement.
Looks like you changed that on Tuesday.
Okay. I mean, that, that was our intention. I just want to make sure my words match our intention.
I'm just, I'm wondering if instead of designs must be compatible, if instead of just the word compatible there, we should use the same verbiage we're using in a similar situation, which was visually compatible and so that the language every time it comes up is similar.
Sure.
Do you want me to make any changes to this?
Yeah, you want to add before compatible visually? And complimentary.
Okay, we are in definitions.
Hey Bo, when you stop and you ghost, like you're actually doing one of these sections, can you make sure you click on it? Because I have a lot easier time. Just jump into your location then.
Yep, that works for me.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, scrolling through here. Which definition did you want me to stop on just to make sure I get there?
Single family homes, S.
And Bo, you need to make a note to yourself, that last part where you changed it and added complimentary, it's complimentary with an E, not an I, spell check will not catch that for you.
Do we define family?
We do have a family.
Yes, we do. Can we go back to F? Everything has changed for the Realtors in the last 18 months, so I just want to make sure.
I think it talks about if they're not by blood, it's four, maximum of four unrelated.
Do we want to make a little checkmark by that and check with the state on that? What is defined as a family?
We can. Writing a note here because that one's easy.
Janelle, could you look that up now?
Just for family?
To be honest, I don't think we're even allowed to have a definition right now. If you consider yourself family, we can't, we can't use the word.
There's no definite, from what I'm finding, there's a definition for relative.
Okay, what it says here is a group of one or more parents and their children living together as a unit. Or all the descendants of a common ancestor.
And then under relative, it's a parent's, step parent, brother, sister, stepbrother, stepsister, half brother, half sister, brother-in-law. And then it goes down the list, niece, uncle, aunt, step uncle, step aunt, or any person of a preceding generation as denoted by prefix of grand, great, 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 or whether by blood, marriage, or legal adoption, or the spouse of any person's name in the subsection, if, even if the marriage is terminated by death or divorce for purposes of the application for adoption, relative includes extended family member as defined in 48, whether by blood, marriage, adoption, or including the adoption under tribal law or custom.
So I think our definition, blood, marriage, adoption, we have that in there.
Doesn't say anything about adults taking care of foster children.
Can we just reference C, 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 whatever you just, under with stats or admin code?
So the concern here is to have a bunch of people that aren't related to each other, living in a home. Is that really the issue? Because I, I don't know, maybe, maybe I'm from a different generation, but I just, I don't feel the need to define family. I mean, it's, it's people that live together. There's all kinds of families these days and I'd, I'd rather not have any sort of definition. If we want to say we only want this many people living together, let's say that. Let's not make it some sort of, you know, traditional family has, has an exemption on it.
And Nate, I think that would cover it. I, I think you, you nailed it.
So do you want me to strike?
Well, I, I kind of like the way that we have it because it condensed to send somebody to wherever you were, Bo, and to quote that is just one additional step. Either we have to use all of that verbiage, or it talked about blood, marriage, adoption. If we want to add foster, which is a good, a good point, Rob. And or not more than four unrelated persons who live together. I mean, when I rented, when I first bought my old house, but I was considered, I think, a boarding house at that time. At one point in time, I did have, there were five of us living together. And we were, in a sense, a family because we shared the house.
So how does blood, marriage, adoption, or legal status matter?
Doesn't. But then, but, but then if the goal is to not have more than four unrelated persons who live together, or do we just simply not care about that either? On how many people?
That to me is a fire code issue, is how many people can live there safely? That's not a
Well, there are fire code issues as we know in employee housing that are violated every single day in multiple dwelling units across the county. Chris Hack talks about it periodically.
And I know, I've, I've heard him, it's been a couple of years. But then I'm, I'm aware of that.
That shouldn't stop us from those setting limits.
Sure.
So Nate, are you, and, and then Mary Kay with your support, are, are the, are you basically saying we should just not even have a definition for family?
I'm not allowed to use the word family in any advertising, family friendly. I have to use guests, overnight guests, visitors. I, I might even recuse myself from, from, from this conversation at this point in time, just simply because my rules are so succinct as to what I can do. There, there are so many definitions of family right now that I'm sure some of them are before the Supreme Court right now. So my answer, Rob, I don't know, I don't know.
Would, would you, from, from your understanding of the current marketplace, would you say there's going to be a shift away from developers and sales agents referring to quote unquote, single family homes?
That is, that's a very good question. That is not an MLS field because we cannot use the word family. We use it throughout our zoning code, but you'll never see any of us saying that this is a single family home because things are multi-generational now too. So it's a very sticky wicket. I apologize, but there
But I think, you know, what Mary Kay is bound by is very different. And if in our code, we are using the specific words of single family housing in the code, I think we have to define each of them. If she can't use it in her line of work, I believe that's different, but it's throughout our code. So unless we go and change everything else, which then maybe can be a follow-up conversation on where, you know, where is that throughout the code and address each one of them?
That's not, that's not the problem Denise. The problem is the definition of family.
I think the first four words are the definition. The group of persons, a group of persons.
Why would we have to have a definition of it? Why can't we just use single family the way we do? And then not have a definition of it?
So not have a definition of family, but still have the definition of a single family home?
All right, well, I was
I'm trying, is that what you said?
No, I, if you're, that you're going to refer to a, a structure in that regard, or maybe this has, becomes a, a conversation for another time, but I think we're getting to something where, I mean, it sounds to me Nate, what, you know, you know, do we really want to have a definition of family then? And do we really want to say a family daycare home and not just a daycare home? What's the point of saying a family daycare home on the line above the definition for family? I, I have a question. Why does Plan Commission wants to define family? I, that, I just want to hear that from Plan Commission. Is there a reason why we would want to define it?
I'm guessing it was defined a long time ago because it talked about, I think the more important aspect was not more than four unrelated persons.
And I'm assuming that since we refer to housing as single family or multiple family, it just made sense that you, someone said family in there.
I think it's really a bigger, bigger conversation when Jeff can
Yes, I, I think that Plan Commission has to really analyze this and make a decision.
Because you know, I mean, that's, that's what our one is, single family residents, multiple family, large lot, small lot.
In my, in, sorry Denise, I didn't, sorry, didn't mean to cut you off there.
Go ahead, I'm done.
In my opinion, I think this is a lo- larger conversation to have when we overhaul the entire zoning code because this could impact how we define certain sections or certain districts within our zoning code.
Right, right. There's too much that would have to be changed.
But this is a great conversation because this is going to keep us current. So for right now, I will
Nate's gonna pull that, cut and paste that and we'll talk to Jeff about it.
Okay, do you want me to just leave it how it is right here with that addition of foster care?
I, I think for now.
Okay.
I would rather see it, I'd be far more comfortable if it just said a group of persons. Because it's going to be a definition and it's it's what I'm comfortable with. I guess, there's just, there's a lot of things that, that come up that, that are a little bit off topic that, that made me think that we should not be defining it like that, but I don't want to go further down that path.
Today, I would just, I, the only problem I have with that Nate is when you're, when a definition can be linked back to, or it, you know, referred to by the reader in a, in a document like this that refers to single family and multifamily, I, I think saying, if you're going to have a definition of, of family, saying group of persons, simply a group of persons is too problematic when you know, there's multifamily and there's single family. If we're going to have a definition, it should define, it, it should not leave itself open to interpretation. Which is why I started thinking, maybe we don't want to have a definition at all. Go ahead and use the phrase, you know, use the phrases as we do and let the the marketplace and the citizens living there define it. And if it's a fire code violation, we deal with that when it comes.
I'd rather not have it there than have it how it is now.
Okay, so Nate does not like the current wording, would just like the group of persons.
Or nothing.
Rob, you're saying just delete the whole definition?
I'm saying that, don't even have a definition for family and remove family from the, from the, and just say, before that, just say daycare home and don't refer to it as a family daycare home. Just say daycare home and then from their role to farm.
Well, family daycare home is in multiple, multiple places in the code.
Then, then, then I would reference that too, to say, do we really, do we want to, in moving forward, refer in all those instances to, to a daycare home?
Well, I, I believe that that's in the, Janelle, can you look that up on the state? Because we're referencing a section.
I think we looked that up like four times already, so it's probably pretty good.
Yeah.
I guess what this seems like is we're pulling on a thread and it's going awful far and we've got a, we're gonna have to tear apart this sweater and re-mit it. And maybe we have to let it, as much as I don't like it, maybe we have to let it stay in place for now until we have the time to redo it all the way.
That, that's what, that's what I also think, Nate. I think really good points have been brought up, but I think it's just too deep in our code to change it right now.
So I, I don't like it, but I can see that we can't pull this thread because the conversation to just the surface conversation is taking a long time and that's not even getting into the nitty gritty of it. So I think I can begrudgingly accept that we, we just leave it as is or with the, the modifications that currently stay.
Okay.
That was good.
I agree.
Okay, and now what is the definition that you gave for single family homes, Denise?
I can't re, it's one, it's a short sentence.
Please, Bo.
It, it used the word family, that's why we came back to family.
Because I'll just have to scroll down.
That's being said, it's single family housing, so.
Okay, single family housing is a building designed and occupied, okay, once I'm gonna type that quick.
Okay, other than this, that's what we have for the changes.
So then does that mean that So then does that mean that uh? We take a vote to take this to public hearing?
Well, you have to review those tables yet from.
Janelle, so we have those tables. Jeff isn't here. I'm going to have to go with Jeff. I'm gonna have to talk to Jeff and clarify those numbers. So that's fine. We Jeff and I can go through those.
Okay.
Okay, so yes, we would need a vote to bring this to public hearing.
And so would we schedule that at our net? Uh, do we want? Do we think that there's going to be a lot of conversation and we want to hold this public hearing separate from a regular Plan Commission meeting? What is the will of the?
Doesn't it need a class B or a class C publication?
Yeah, it does.
A public hearing for this?
Yeah.
Times.
Yep.
Based on what Bo has been saying that we're going to have a couple of busy meetings coming up, we probably have to have a special meeting.
Yeah, I would propose.
I'm gonna get my calendar.
Monday, the thirteenth, I think will be workable for.
I don't think Monday, the thirteenth will meet the the uh the required posting timeline that we need.
No, it won't.
What what do we need?
Well, it's a class two notice and it's got to be published. So that means it's got to be published in two separate weeks. And we, in order to meet the deadline, we'd have to have it to the advocate by Friday.
So it would have to be two weeks after Friday, the third. So the the early.
If you want it in the pulse, which is probably better.
Yep. So the earliest you could have it is Monday, the twentieth.
And what time is our finance meeting that day?
Three to five thirty.
I won't be around on the twentieth.
What uh, what about Monday, the twenty seventh? That's finance also. Is that also three to five thirty?
That was four to six thirty.
So the twentieth is three thirty, the twenty seventh is four.
No. Are you talking about a start time or a finish time?
Start time.
Start time is three o'clock on the twentieth for finance and four o'clock on the twenty seventh.
Thank you.
And those end times Denise were based on combining personnel and finance. So if you wanted to consider a reasonable start time with a gap in between, we could, I'm sure we could reassess. You know, not a two and a half hour timeframe for one of those finance meetings and declare it strictly finance.
This is a complete overhaul of the village of the Sister Bay zoning code. Are you honestly going to try to rush this through in three weeks? I think October is appropriate. I'm not available the first few days in the first week of October.
Are you, Mary Kay, when you say that, are you? Are you, are you meaning that we should still go ahead and get the notifications done as soon as possible, but give the public more time to digest it?
Absolutely.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood what you were saying. Well, should we, what about Monday, October eleventh?
Finance also meets.
I don't, have you got something scheduled for that already?
Yes.
I haven't, I haven't got a scheduling announcement on October. The only finance meetings I've got scheduling information for are the twentieth and twenty seventh of September.
So I believe the eleventh is a backup date. That's why it's not on my calendar either, Rob, that we would decide that based off of the twenty seventh meeting. Okay, so to my, I mean.
Is there any issue with the fact that that's ingenious in Columbus Day slash?
Was there? We're just looking at Mondays. I mean, typically Plan Commission meets on Tuesdays and as long as there's not board. Tuesdays are generally good for me.
Okay, what about the twelfth then, October twelfth?
What about the fifth?
That's fine too.
I'll be out of town. I'd like to be present. I have a Realtors Convention.
So would you say it's appropriate that we start a public hearing like this at?
Six o'clock.
Clock.
Yes.
So does anyone have a problem with Tuesday, October twelfth?
Yeah, I do. All right, well, let's uh. What about Tuesday? Oh, no, that's regular Plan Commission. That's board.
On Monday, the eighteenth.
Yeah, it's the day before the board.
Oh, let's what, can we go to Wednesday, the thirteenth?
I can't do Wednesdays.
Okay.
And after uh, after October uh tenth, I have, uh, we're losing um, an employee and I have, I have, I'm already working six days a week. I have no idea what my schedule will be like after the tenth. I couldn't guarantee anything after the tenth.
What about Thursday, the seven?
I'll be back.
I'm good.
That's a positive. I think that can work. Nate?
Yeah.
Okay, Thursday, the seventh at six P M.
Somebody want to make a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Motion by Gretzmerker, second by Zoschki. Any further discussion? All those in favor respond with an eye.
Aye.
Aye.
Posed. Okay, so then um, so then that would work out okay, because then twelve days later would be the board and um. Could be adopted on the nineteenth possibly. Okay.
So in related to something I said last meeting. In our public notice, are we going to say that this is phase one of a total revision of the code? You correct?
I would say no, I would say just a a revision of the zoning code because you don't want to allude to people that there's more in store at this point. I would say let's get through this so that people aren't questioning, well, what's coming next? Don't open the Pandora's box just yet until we have a plan.
There also is never a final code. There's only the code for the time being.
Correct. I would just say update of the zoning code.
Alright.
And so you'll just list basically all the sections that we went through, all all the zoning districts, the definitions and and everything is staying because I think I don't know in the past if we actually when Bob was here, if we actually gave the public access to a red line version. They kind of had to go through and figure out. And so I think this is going to be much more helpful for people understanding what what has actually changed.
Yeah, they were, if they wanted to do that, they had to look at the code.
So so we're going to give them a link to this document?
Well, no, we, while we can't, yes, we can make it a link to the documents that it's easily accessible for the people that can do that. But I also have to make it accessible for everyone. So that means that it has to be, we have to have a physical copy, at least one in in the office. Uh, we have to print, we have to make a PDF form for people to download and view it as well. So we have to, we have to have a couple of options here.
Got it.
And when we, when we do something like that, are we at liberty to gain any information as far as name of people, name of person requesting it or downloading it, or does that remain unknown?
Oh, I mean, I can't just, I can't keep track of anybody who looks at this.
I I'm just.
If we want to do Rob, we can track. I mean, there's enough information out there, but I don't know how.
I mean, I I I wouldn't, I wouldn't say we need to or would want to.
Okay, I I have one other question. We didn't finite it in the motion. Do we need to, I would think we need to clarify with these public announcements the format in which this hearing is going to be held, right Denise? And you you are the one to decide that. Do you want this to be declared a a public hearing via Zoom only? Is this a public here? Yes?
Yes.
So then then it should say that in the announcement.
We can add that.
So that there's no questioning as to whether it's going to, you know, that that it's clarified at Zoom only.
I mean, and I think that worked really well if we think back to the public hearing that we had um, on the rezoning of the Fred and Fuzzy's property. We had all kinds of people from all over.
We had a hundred and twenty.
We had a hundred. Access was great. I think.
I I just want to make sure we're telling people upfront, this is the, this is the only way you could join.
But I think what it'll do is open it to more people than we usually get.
Absolutely.
And we'll also take written comment, same as always.
Yep.
So that you guys know too, the documents that are going to be available for the public to see are all separate versions of each of those sections. We have to do it that way.
Yep, so but that's okay because we don't, at the public hearing, we don't have to go through them like we've been doing at Plan Commission. We open it up for people to talk. We don't have to open it up. You know what I mean? We'll we'll make it one fluid document via PDF, Janelle, but for our purposes and our coordination and organizing this, it, we had to put them in separate documents. So that if it gets approved, we can just click accept changes.
So I, I have a question. Should there be a deadline? For emails to come in so that they are in our packet that should be noticed in the public hearing and what you're going to publish. And it should be whenever the packet is going to go out with whatever information is in it. On that Friday, I think the cutoff then should be the day before. So you guys have time to include all of it. So if they can't get it in Thursday by four o'clock, if that's when the office closes, then they would have to zoom into the meeting to make their comments known.
But is that identical to every other public hearing being held by the village? Because otherwise you face a court challenge.
Well, they can still zoom in. I just, because if we have tons come in after on Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, and then for staff to try to get all of that to us for us to review it.
It happened with Fred and Fuzzy's. I don't see how you can disallow it here.
Mary Kay, as long as we address it in the public hearing that the cutoff date for comments and correspondence to be put into the packet, then we're fine. It doesn't matter from a consistency standpoint, because at some point, one way or another, we would update that.
It it's true. Anybody can sue the village for anything and I fully expect that to happen, really. So. Let's have.
We're not doing anything.
I always liked that answer, Nate.
Well, we'll make the cutoff Thursday, the thirtieth. I I would, I think staff would appreciate that. So we have time to organize this and we don't have to keep sending you all individual emails as they pop up.
But then we need to make sure we absolutely stick to that with a hard line.
I agree. Okay.
In the meeting, um, if somebody asks a question, is Denise the respondent or do we not respond to questions?
So we, the Denise, do you want to answer that as chair?
Um, usually I will take the lead, but certainly, you know, anybody can um converse with you know, any questions? I mean, I I don't have a problem. I'm not, I'm not king.
What's happened in the past though?
Um, normally I would just um, answer questions and I think other people, if they had something to say or expand or expound better um, than my response, they're they're welcome to to chime in.
You've also given others an opportunity to add to it Denise in the past.
I think the only time this has really been that much of an issue is when we had a public hearing for a specific person. I mean, I come to think of that kid who came up with the with the gravel pit. And he was out there in front of a public hearing and he was saying, okay, I'm ready to field the questions now. I was like, wow, but I mean, this this sort of stuff is the village making changes. So it's it's pretty innocuous.
Good.
You know, I I would imagine that um, David, that most, most of what we will get is I don't like this change. It's going to affect my property. This isn't fair. Et cetera, et cetera. And there there really isn't not necessarily a response to that. I just say thank you and we we listen to the next person. I mean, you take notes. Um, but you know, our role as Plan Commission members is to do our best with the best interests of the village at hand and can't bring in necessarily particular people, particular circumstances. Now, somebody may have a a really great point and and I remember we changed the sign code because of something that Mitch Larson said. And but he came up with a proposal. He wasn't just criticizing. He came up with a way for it to be fair for all businesses. And so I think if somebody presents, you know, an option, okay, this is what you're presenting. But what about this? Consider that and you know, you chew on it and and you take everybody's comments in in stride. But we have done our work to the best of our ability, had some really great conversation. I'm not saying that you know, nothing will change, a lot will change. I simply don't know, but this is our work product. And there are people who simply will not like it and I'm, and I don't mean to sound cruel, but that's just a fact.
It is what it is. It is what it is Denise. It always depends upon whose ox is being gored.
Exactly. And that can be construed as a takings and in which case they will take the village to court. So be it, you know?
That's their choice.
I mean, I've seen it happen a kajillion times, not with this village, but throughout the county. So.
Yep.
Now, do you want to schedule a future work session for the documents Nate's gonna work on or do you want to wait with that?
I don't think Nate's working on them. He just has the list.
I I think we should just get past this public hearing before we start going off in other directions.
Okay. And I also then need to know what's going to happen after October ninth with my schedule. So um.
That'll be a good time to reassess.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
But we will not lose sight of the other work sessions at all. So. Okay.
Questions will be scheduled after the public hearing.
Yes, it'll be.
Schedule a later date.
At a later date.
Okay, alright, that's it.
Okay, thanks, everybody. Is there a motion to adjourn? I so move. Motion by Gretzmerker.
Second.
Second by Zoschki. All in favor respond with an eye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, carried. Everybody have a good night. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Wow, can you stay on for?